We are going to have a public hearing concerning our tax rates. Before that, though, would you join me for the invocation given by Mike Curtis, in which we may stand before the pledge allegiance? And Bob, why don't you step up and lead us in the pledge allegiance?
If you would, only in your faith. Lord God, we come to you this evening, Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. And God, we don't take this lightly, and Lord, just watch over us. Give us strength to make wise decisions, and always look out for the good of the people. God, we thank you for our nation, we thank you for our state, we thank you for our city. God, we just thank you for the diversity of our city. And y'all just do with our children as they start school, protect them, keep them safe, and give all the teachers the strength they need to make it through this year. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Bob?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. And I'd like to remind the city councilman, when you're speaking, please turn your microphone to on, so that Tim can hear you up there. And we do have need for a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. It concerns the setting of our 2018, let's see, 2019, could be right, Calorium property tax rate. I know for most people that doesn't really mean anything. It is something that is done every year by law. And this year, we are going to ask to increase our tax rate by .0016. I don't even know how to say what that is. I don't know. So, like sixteen ten thousandths, okay? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address us concerning our tax rate? And Mr. Harold, do you have anything that you'd like to say about this? Did I do a good job of explaining it?
Yes, Mayor, I think it's sixteen thousandths.
Sixteen thousandths, okay, of a penny, okay? So, in other words, we really...
Approximately the same rate.
Right. Approximately the same.
So, it's figured seven cents on a hundred dollars.
There you go. Thank you, Mike.
No, that's it.
Thank you, Ed, that was good.
Bring him here and teach that.
We are. I was gonna say, you're not the county clerk or anything, so...
Well...
...careful necessary. Anything else, Councilman? Then I close this public hearing, and we can move on with our agenda. First thing on our agenda, and let me stop for just a moment. And Mr. Wallace, wave at me up there. Mr. Wallace is here with his video crew. They're up there in the video mess pretty soon, and I believe, Mr. Wallace, we'll probably see you on the floor, won't we, with some cameras? And so, that'll be much nicer. Be sure and check us out on Facebook. We are streaming live on Facebook. And tonight with Mr. Wallace are two new students. This is their first night for being here in the video class. And their names are Jason and Katie. And so, welcome to you kids up there, and thank you so much for all you did for us. We have a consent agenda to approve, and this is again, two sets of minutes, because we have a special meeting, as well as the approval of our bills. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ed, second by Clarence, all those in favor. That's unanimous. Moving along to our, I know y'all be tired of me saying this, but my favorite part of the meeting, and that is honoring and recognizing people. And as we have said every month since late March, and this is my last year as mayor, and one of the things that I really wanted to do is recognize all the volunteers who really don't ever make, they're not the ones that are in the limelight. They're not the ones that are always recognized by the MRPC people, or the Chamber people. These are people that I believe have done the most to help me be successful as mayor, and have helped our city to improve over the last eight years. And tonight, I am very, very proud to nominate my friend, Bob Norris. Bob and his wife Sherri Seacrest Norris have a son and daughter. Bob retired from the Army in 1994, and of course, they have lived in our community since then. I believe he retired as a sergeant first class. He has been a member of the American Legion since 2011, and the post commander since 2018, and I believe you just started your second term. I attended your installation and kind of surprised you a little bit. He is the commander of the William Anderson Post, 331. Bob, you have been such a good friend. And one more thing I'd like to say, you're also an American Legion rider, a motorcyclist. I call you guys my peeps, because without fail, over the last several years, if you needed something done, much like the Boy Scouts, I knew who to call. You called the American Legion. And so, Bob, we're so proud of you. I, again, can always count on you. And one thing that I've said to a couple of my awardees is, please know that I'm not just giving this to you. I'm giving it to Sherri, and I'm giving it to the American Legion. And if you would come forward. Come on up, Bob. So, the first thing I have for you, because you are my military friend, is a coin from the city. Congratulations, thank you for all you've done for our country and for our community. And tonight, guys, I'd like to give him the Good Citizen Award for the month of August. Let's look at this lady right here.
Don't like move his head.
Got it? Bob, I'm proud of you. Andy, is there anything you would like to say to the community?
I'd just like to thank everybody in Waynesville who supports the American Legion. Without your all support, we can't do what we do.
Very good. I forgot to read this, because I was real proud of what I wrote. It says, this recognizes the good citizenship of Bob Norris, and we're honoring your love of family and friends, your love of community, and your love of your country. And for the many volunteer hours you give, and for your positive influence with our veterans and our community, we thank you. And then, I'll talk a little bit, and then you come up. That way, you don't have to stand here and listen to me, okay? But we started, this is the second month for our business spotlighting. And we have received nominations from people concerning our businesses. Remember, last month, our first one was the CMR Group, Communications for Research. Tonight, it is, for some of us, our dear old friends Carolyn and Larry Lurcher. They own Business Graphics on Square. I can remember moving here in 1971, so I beat you a little bit. Carolyn, I believe y'all established in August of 77. In fact, that's the same age as my daughter. She just had her birthday, so you're 42 years old. Your business is 42 years old. Business Graphics is an office supply company, and of course, as a city, we've used them a lot for whether it's our furniture, whether it's our printing. They custom print business cards and other flyers. It is really a business, a one-stop shopping experience for office supplies. And so, you were nominated. We are thrilled that you are here with us tonight. And just let me say personally, that I had your children in school, very good friends of mine now. Both of them have gone on to do great things. I have become wonderful friends with your daughters-in-law, and of course, how proud of you and of your grandchildren. And so, we're thrilled to have you here, guys, tonight, if you would come up and join me. And this will also give you the opportunity to advertise if you wish to, and I believe they talked with you about that. But I want to offer this proclamation to you guys, and tell you thank you for all you've done for our community. We did. We did. Is there anything you would like to say to the community?
My dad, he's been here beating me for a few years since you come to San Antonio. Well, I really came to downtown Waynesville in October of 62.
In that business?
Well, the newspaper business.
That's right. That's right.
So...
You did beat me.
I've been on the square 57 years.
Oh, my goodness. 57 years. Well, we appreciate the Lurcher family. Okay. As you get older, you forget a lot of that history. You know, for real. Okay, that was nice. That was nice. Thank you very, guys, very much for that. Okay, we will begin, oh, let's see. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the city council? Oh, it's my buddy Dean, come on up. Guys, this is Dean Calkins.
Yeah?
A lot of them know me already.
I would think they would.
Well, first off, I want to thank the city, especially the workers that come down and help alleviate that wall problem we got down there on Mitchell Creek, and I guess fourth time's the charm, because they figure they gotta figure it out, right? And we're still having the problem. Bruce said they're gonna come down and do a smoke test, and I was wondering when. I'm thinking a bunch of rainwater being dropped off those gutters into our sanitary sewer system. Because my sewer dropped down, darn near foot, into the sanitary sewer. And every time we get a hard rain, it fills up, comes into my basement, comes into Daniel's basement, comes into Jones'. So, there's got to be water coming in from somebody's gutter system somewhere. And I was just wondering when would they do the smoke test, to see if they can find what...
I don't think we have a hard date on that, but we'll give a check and then we'll get you a hard date. We've been backed up on other projects like well through the Northern Heights, so...
Right now, I'm plugging everything every time we get a hard rain, and it's just getting tiresome.
We'll move that up on our list, but we've had a busy schedule, but we'll put that on our list, Dean.
All right.
Okay, Dean, thank you. And good to see ya.
I'll figure it out.
Okay, Board and Commissioner reports. Our friend Lawrence has gone to take care of his brother, I believe, is what he told me, and Amanda's filling in for him.
Hello.
Amanda Coran is one of our park board members.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
City Council. It was a very short meeting, so I'm probably gonna stand up here for like a couple of minutes.
Okay.
So, we met last Thursday, which was the 8th, at the farmer's market in RV Park. We've been meeting in the parks to try to get community involvement. Some places, we have more luck than others. That was not a, that was not a place that people came to visit with us, but that was okay. So, short, short and sweet meeting. We found out from the Master Gardeners that they're gonna start a Ruby Dew Rocks Garden at the RV Park to get the community involved with leaving their mark, basically, on the park. So, if you paint a rock, take a picture, post it on the Ruby Dew Rocks Facebook page, then they can identify that rock. The Master Gardeners are gonna go out, get the rock, and seal it, so it's weather-protected. And then, it'll eventually become a part of the border in the demonstration garden, so...
Big rocks. These aren't big rocks.
Yeah, these, they're various sizes, but yeah, they're larger than what you would find that people pick up. I guess somebody had done that and left a rock, and that sparked the idea then for them to have that. The Master Gardeners also want everybody to know that August 20th is their next Master Gardener session. Goes for 15 weeks. Currently, it's $125 for the 15 weeks. Next year, it goes up significantly, so if anybody's been looking at joining the Master Gardeners. There's a form online, or you can just show up the night of with your check and join.
And I think that gets you certified.
It does. It gets you certified.
It certifies you as a Master Gardener.
Yes, ma'am. The sports program, the fall season has begun already. Seems a little crazy, considering we're in 90-degree weather, to say fall sports, but we have 18 soccer teams, three volleyball teams, two cheerleading, and two flag football, and there are 355 athletes this year.
Wow.
So, they're doing well, and now that sports are kicked back up, we're back in the business of selling candy bars, so there are candy bars available. So, make sure you get those, so we can wrap that up. They are looking at doing another fundraiser at McDonald's. That was a big hit, so hopefully, we see that coming up in the near future. Our park superintendent, Randy Brown, said that they have been extremely busy just doing day-to-day operations, but that they did have an issue at the Splash Park. It didn't stop the Splash Park from operating, but they do believe they have fixed the problem, or I don't think they've fixed it yet. Maybe we have clarification from Bruce on that, but I know they got the part in to fix the problem.
I think we're still working on it, but it's still working, but we still have one more thing to do.
Okay.
And am I correct? I think I saw this on Facebook from some, one of the city people, that we usually close the Splash Park Labor Day, but when it's really, really hot like it's been...
We keep it open.
We do keep it up for a little bit. Maybe not every day, because school's in session, but maybe the weekend. So, kind of keep an eye. It'd be open all the time, though.
It'd be open all the time.
Okay.
For the little kids, yeah.
Sorry about that. Okay?
Yeah, and so, I think it's gonna, there are several cities that are keeping things like that open past Labor Day, because the weather has been a bit abnormally warm. The electric department is in the process of setting up the security system. You might have further information than we did as of last week, but they had been, they had set the poles, and the conduit had been run to, to supply power and...
And of course, this all relates to our vandalism issues. And y'all will remember that I gave the mama speech last month about taking care of your kids and talking to your kids. Well, you really need to talk to your kids now, because we have cameras, and we're gonna catch these guys, and hopefully, mom and dad won't have to pay thousands of dollars. I'm serious. If we catch you hurting the playground, or hurting the Splash Park, or we can prove you did something to our new bathrooms, it's gonna cost you a lot of money. And you need to talk to the kids about it. And our cameras are gonna be up, I would imagine, within a few weeks. They will be working, and we're gonna get ya.
And our guidance to the community, even though there's gonna be a security system, if you see something, say something.
Exactly.
The bathroom showers were not working at the RV Park. Randy was trying to locate a leak in the wall, so I don't know if we have an update on that, or if those showers are still down. And then, the only event that we still have coming up this month is the Blue Star Families Military Community Event. And that'll be next Saturday.
It's a new event, and of course, Blue Star Families are families that are deployed. And I believe I'll be out of town then. I believe I've asked councilmen the liberty to do that. Several people were out of town. This is kind of a time for many of us to travel, and so, we will have a representative there.
Very nice.
So, it'll be nice. Any questions, Amanda?
All right, any questions?
Amanda, you did a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, we won't tell Lawrence that you did better than him, though, because he's really working on that.
Maybe he's, maybe he's watching. Hi, Lawrence.
He's probably watching. Hello, Lawrence. Planning and zoning, Councilman Davis, we did not have a need for a meeting this month, and so, there's probably nothing to say. Is that correct, Mr. Harold?
Yes.
Okay, standing committees, roads and grounds, Councilman France.
Okay, I called the meeting order at four o'clock on August 1st. Members were present. We had an update on road paving projects, all been completed, or that were scheduled for this coming year, with the exception of one, and that is mainly because of all the paving that's going on on the major arteries has a little priority. Proposal for nonprofit discount for the use of park facilities, we are going to continue discussion next month. Drainage issues. Birch Lane area, we have tried to do a diversion technique that we used up in the Cox subdivision early on. We'll see if that works. Mitchell Creek, there's a sewer line in there, so they can't dig as deep as they need to keep the concrete blocks. This is in reference to the gentleman's property area. It's near the Old Age Highway. Cost sharing on Mary Catherine, they're still working that with residents. As of this point in time, we do not, or as of time of our meeting, we do not have response from them willingness to cost share. Street evaluation report, I would encourage all council persons to drive their areas, take a good look at all the roads within your boards, and the street update is gonna happen later on this year, as we slow down from summer shore. But you will have input onto it, to where you may be able to upgrade some of your roads and report stuff like this based on your input. So, take a good look. There was a necessity for a closed session. I motioned to go into closed session, and which we did, and at 4:41, we came out at 4:57, at which time, I made a motion to allow Mr. Harold to bid on properties at the city tax sale. Councilman Barnes seconded the motion. All were in favor. The motion passed, having helped our business. I adjourned at 4:58. The scheduled meeting is at 4:30 September 5th, which is, wow, my 65th birthday.
Happy birthday. Mr. Harold, when is the tax sale?
It's on August 26th, I believe.
Okay, very good. All right. This is coming Monday?
August 26th. Okay, it's 26th.
Very good idea. Any questions for Mike, anybody? Okay, moving on, we have utilities, keep talking, Mike.
I called the meeting order on August 6th at 3:30. All persons were, all members were present. We started off with Small Community Engineering Assistance Grant. We're looking at this to, it's a grant of about $62,500, and we're looking to use this to identify INI, inflow and infiltration into our sewer system of storm water and stuff like that. We've already done a couple areas in the city. If you've noticed, we've done smoke testing of our manholes. That's all part of that program. But engineering is one of the most expensive areas that we have, other than replacement. And so, if we can get $62,500 to dip, that helps. Sewer replacement, vicinity of Home Street has been completed. The pressure relief valve bypass at the vicinity of Fleetwood has been completed. The Tower 6 drain line, intended to be scheduled for September, is still on. The Northern Heights tank update due to be delivered within the next six weeks. If you've been up there, they've got the base, most of it, the wall, the retaining wall is in. They've got fill in there. Today, they welded on the flange to the filler and the drain valves, and then they'll do the rest of the filling up and get it all tamped in before we pour the major slab on top of it all. But our workers have really done yeoman's work and have saved our city quite a bit of money if we had that done by an outside contractor. And Dwayne has really been critical in doing these things, like our bridges and stuff, and he just had shoulder surgery last week, so he is, he's probably coming back shortly, but he'll be supervising for a while instead of working his tail off on the wellhouse and stuff like that. But on wellhouse number two, the one down near, down near the farmer's market area, it'll be tested tomorrow, and then you can go online shortly thereafter, if everything works out good. Sewer line to the industrial park has been put on hold. As, you know, the people that we've got, well, can you go in there? We have, they haven't got permits, they're not due to be issued till early next year, and we've got, we've had some unexpected expenses with well number two and three going down. We had some issues, so we're delaying it for a little while. Wastewater Infrastructure Financing Workshop is next Monday. Mr. Eldridge and Ms. Mary Jones will be going, as well as Councilman Sean Wilson from my utility committee, is going up there to get into the law. Water loss report, when I first took over chairmanship of this committee from Mr. Pat Howe several years ago, we were reporting to Danny Graves at that time, we were losing 50% of our water plus. We really couldn't tell. We're now, according to the most recent reports, less than 20% loss. Now, we're still in excess of state standard, but to get that down to where we're at and measurable, you know, much better than what we ever had before. Very, very significant, and I really appreciate the work of Mr. Eldridge and those guys who are doing that, Mr. McDonald. Electric outage, we had a contractor that hit a power line, broke a pole, and transformer hit the ground, opened up, oil drained out. So, we had to have the oil tested, I mean, it's tend to be, to where it can be an EPA-directed issue, and it costs lots of money. We were lucky in that it didn't have the PCBs yet or anything like that, so it's still a mess. We got it cleaned up, and we will be charging the contractor for that. Reconductoring the feeder line, and the feeder line C to D tying. All the reconducting is putting new wire. Some of this wire is 40-plus years old, and it's got issues. So, we've been reconducting throughout the city for the last couple of years. It's just gonna make our power problems diminish, those, and increase reliability. As far as tying C to D, when you have a power outage, it used to be, you were out until we got your feeder on. Now, we can backfeed to where we can reduce the number of properties that are out of power, or we can backfeed the whole area, and we've been doing that for a couple of years also. So, that's due to begin in September for C to D. Pole replacement, we spent some money, had the company come in and check out our poles. They've done about 50% of them, and they showed us we had 14 poles to be replaced. We have completed nine of those, five to be still remaining. But besides replacing these poles, we've had those storms come through that took poles down, so we had to replace them on a higher priority. And then, when you have vendors come in and they take other poles down, we've gotta replace them. So, we've replaced a lot more than nine poles, and some of them were good poles. So, we're still working it, and we will get through that. Natural gas dig-up issue, we had a couple of them this month. One was based upon the, our, when we went out to market, we got a sensing off another adjacent line, and so, it was mis-marked accidentally. And so, we fixed that issue, hopefully, but we also had another one, but it was based on no dig right being requested. And so, we're looking at that, and we have made recommendations to the mayor and to Mr. Harold in regard to that issue, and they will be addressing that. Let's see, water service, basically, one of the biggest things is we received results from the lead and copper testing in Northern Heights area, and we are all good to go up there. There was a necessity for closed session in regard personnel, real estate, legal, and we went into there at 4:12, came out at 4:47, and made our recommendations to Mr. Harold. Our insurance company, remember, we changed insurance companies to where we're kind of self-insuring with a bunch of other communities throughout the entire state, which has saved us a significant amount of money. But in doing so, we also have some additional safety tasks that we need to accomplish, and they have got those already in place, and they're working those issues, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Harold, along with all our subordinate units within the city, to make sure that we are compliant, so we're gonna be good to go. Subject to your questions, oh, we do have a resolution. Would you address it for me?
Any questions for Mike? Did we have, thank you, come up and help us today as we conduct the meeting? They can, they, I think they owe us a little bit of work, so they did come up and help us with one of the poles that they did. We're playing the work back and forth.
Very good. We do have a resolution here, and it's Resolution 2019007. Oh, 007. This is the Engineering Assistance Grant, I believe, that was already spoken about. Mr. Harold, do you have anything to add to it before we vote on it?
My mayor, it says, the total grant is, Mike says, Councilman France says, $62,500, a $10,000 of grant money, and our match is $12,500, and it's to help us reduce INI.
Very good.
I would say, you know, we've been operating on a provisional permit for our sewage system over some time, and we have to submit reports on what we're doing to reduce INI. And so, we started out years ago with our chairing, doing a survey of the city and our infrastructure. We've completed some work. We replaced a bunch of lines and everything like this, and so, this is just to continue our forward march of taking care of INI.
And there is a good information sheet that was included right after the resolution, and you guys might want to read through that a little bit. And we really have, since I've been mayor, we've been working diligently on this. I can remember one of our first things was replacing some sewer lines, relines water lines, all kinds of different things that we did in 41.
State helped out. Remember, we got about half a million dollar grant in regard to that. That helped significantly.
Okay, so this is resolution, again, I've already said that number, and I believe I can just read that. A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to file an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for a small community engineering... with Missouri Department of Natural Resources for a small community engineering assistance program. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Mike Curtis, second by Sean, and Madam Clerk, would you call row?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
And that resolution passes unanimously. And Councilman Liberty, finance and human resources.
Meeting was called to order at five P.M. All members of the committee were present. We reviewed the bill, and the vote was called to approve, debate bill. Monthly budget review account status. Mr. Harrow reported to the committee that as of this date, we had over three point two million in city bank account with two point six million in restricted account and six hundred and three thousand six hundred and twenty-four in municipal money. Mr. Harrow reported that due to the large airport grant, it's a challenge with cash flow. They're currently waiting on three hundred and eighty-one thousand reimbursement on a parallel taxiway. Co-ordinates setting two thousand nineteen tax rate, we've already covered that. Co-ordinates establishing procedures for disclosure of conflicts of interest. Mr. Harrow explained law requires all entities to comply with reporting, reporting who has substantial personal or private interest in political subvention. Mr. Harrow stated, we have been notified to proceed with recreation trail grant. Mr. Harrow updated committee on the airport taxiway and terminal grant. Mr. Harrow stated, Department of Natural Resources was accepting application for applying truck government truck program again. Since the city was successful on last application, we are requesting to replace three older dump trucks with a total projected grant of a hundred and ninety thousand. This grant replaces older vehicles with newer fuel-efficient vehicles. And committee moved to send this resolution in the full council. Mr. Harrow updated committee on recent personnel changes. He also proposed two thousand and twenty budget schedule. Post-budget to the committee in October, and a draft budget to council in October for review, with final review at the November council meeting. With this plan, we could always, we may end up, if it's not approved by November meeting, we could end up June, December.
And I would, I would say to our new council people, if you really want to see how the city works, set in on the budget process. It is quite an eye-opener. And to me, it is very interesting. I've always not really enjoyed it, but I sure have.
Not very enjoyable.
It's enjoyable. And I sure have learned a lot, and I would say if you have, if you feel like to come to some of those meetings, it would be very beneficial. Will you throw to that Clarence, apologize?
Committee in return, there was a meeting in closed session, one in closed session, five oh nine. Committee in return of regular session at five seventeen P.M. Meeting was adjourned, we're no further business. Next meeting will be held September twelfth. And that is the end of that report.
And any, any questions for Clarence? We do have several ordinances and a resolution we're going to look at.
Is Mr. Doyle going to be attending our questions, stuff?
He's going to get a good dose of budget meeting, yes.
Mr. Doyle, of course, is our, we're our newly hired assistant city administrator for you who are not familiar with that name yet.
He may miss a few meetings, but we'll make sure he gets a good training session on that.
Okay, we got two ordinances right off the bat, and this is, again, for you new people, Mr. Harrow, you might want to, or Ralph, you might want to describe this very briefly for them. For us old haps, we know what it is.
Yeah, it's done every year, just procedures involving conflicts of interest that you need to disclose and so forth, ask privileges.
Right, and of course, being on the council, you cannot do business with the city beyond five hundred dollars, I believe it is. And so this is something that's done every year, it's done by state law. And this is ordinance twenty-three seventy-eight, counselor.
Right, this will be the first read of the title. An ordinance to establish procedures for disclosure of conflicts of interest to comply with Senate Bill two six two fixing NFTB. An ordinance to establish procedures for disclosure of conflicts of interest to comply with Senate Bill two six two fixing NFTB.
Very good, I entertain a motion. Motion by Ed, second by Cecil. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, would you call row?
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman France?
That ordinance passes, and I believe there is paperwork, is the term, Michelle, that they have to sign? I believe that's correct. So Michelle, beginning with you, do they need to do that before they meet tonight?
Only if they fall under the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
Mayor believes it will have to do it next year, I think it'll have to about May first.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we always kind of do it going forward.
Okay, so they'll let you know.
Yes.
So we have ordinance twenty-three seventy-nine, this is the adlorum, adtolorum property tax set for the city. Counselor?
Thank you. An ordinance fixing the adtolorum property tax rates for the city of Waynesville for the year twenty nineteen on all taxable property within the city. An ordinance fixing adtolorum property tax rates for the city of Waynesville for the year twenty nineteen on taxable property within said city.
And again, this is our property tax, and as we said earlier, it's an increase of point oh oh one six. Any other comments or, let's see, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ed, second by Clarence. And are there any questions or comments?
I have one question there.
Bill?
On here, it says a personal property assessment valuation is going to be less than previous year, and I was just wondering if that serves release.
I believe that's what the assessor, when he went out and assessed the personal property in Waynesville, it went down. It was a little bit surprising. It looked like the real property assessment went up, but his personal property assessment went down. And we're not totally sure for other reason though that, but maybe his car and other personal property got a little bit older, maybe on his charts, the overall impact went down. So that's not, really not determined by us, I think that's given to us by the assessor.
And, and, of course, Bill's an old commissioner.
I will tell you, though, if you've been keeping up with current events, you know that this is kind of an interesting topic, and has really affected a lot of business people especially, and especially in St. Robert, where there's more new construction maybe than in Waynesville. So kind of keep your eye on that, but that is basically what we're doing. I have a motion and a second, and we have Brad. Madam Clerk, would you call row?
Councilman France?
No.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes. We have a resolution, it's twenty nineteen oh oh eight, and I wanted to say just a word about this. This is this Volkswagen Trust grant program that we actually got a dump truck earlier in the year. And for you who do not remember, this was a penalty that the Volkswagen company had to pay to the state of Missouri because they misrepresented their gas miles per gallon on their gas. And so it was several, you know, millions of dollars. And so this money is coming from that. And so I'm going to remind you that, again, this is Resolution oh oh eight, and it says, "A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to file an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for a Volkswagen Trust Government Truck Program Grant." I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Cecil, trying to look both ways, guys. And are there any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, would you take your role?
Councilman France?
Absolutely.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Our next committee is the police committee, and before we let Clarence talk here, I just wanted to say to the public that we did, of course, this, what, two weeks ago, have our second murder in the city of Waynesville. And I would tell you that it is the second murder since I have been mayor for eight years. And it is always a very sad event in our community. We, of course, send our condolences to the family of the victim. It is, again, very sad for our people, sad for our police, it's sad for our first responders, but I want to, I wanted to say to the public that our number one concern is always the safety of our public. And, you know, sometimes things are going on behind the scene that you don't know, but believe me, our police do know. And I wanted to say, congratulations, chief is in the back of the room, to you and your men for how quickly you arrested a suspect. And, you know, all of the team, the law enforcement team of the county, really, worked so well together on this, and I'm going to say thank you for that. Okay? And again, our condolences to the family of the victim. Mr. Liberty?
Meeting was called to order at three P.M. No citizen comment. Co-ordinates on marijuana, Mr. Harrow stated. The ordinance is still under review with Mr. Much. Discussion regarding animal control and beekeeping, limiting number of animals per household, dangerous animal. That is still under discussion. And as was already told, enhanced security for the city park and the other city areas. Police department update, RHS SOC grant fifteen thousand for radios. Chief Cordova discussed that the grant will be used to cover two home mobile radios, one wireless line and the installation. Security cameras installed, Mr. Harrow has stated about them being installed for them. Bear response guidelines, Mr. Harrow went over bear guidelines in a letter that was in the package.
I'm sorry, I apologize for laughing. So about two weeks ago, we had a report that there was a bear in my community, in my area. Well, once the police got in there and investigated it, it was probably a big raccoon. For real, a big raccoon. But these little kids at the park said it was a bear, and of course, we had to go in and check that out. And so, again, I'm not making light of this. Bears in our community, that's something that is important. I mean, we've got to realize that bears really are approaching.
There are bears around.
There, and you see them on the interstate, actually. So I'm not making light of it. And I just wanted to let you know why this was an issue. And so I want, I want a copy of that letter, what to do if you meet a bear. I want a copy of that letter.
That's your favorite.
Yes, very much. Go ahead, Clarence.
Okay, there is a meeting in closed session. Councilman Brown made a motion to end closed session, three thirteen. If we're seconded, when any closed session. Councilman Brown made a motion to return to open session. Motion passed, committee return to open session at three twenty-one P.M. Having no further business, I adjourn the meeting at three twenty-four P.M. Next scheduled meeting will be September fifth at three thirty P.M.
Very good. Any questions for Clarence? Very good. And the airport board? Counselor Wilson.
Good evening. We, the airport board convened at four thirty on July twenty-third. We had, the board members were present, we did have guests that were there. We had five total guests and one via the landline or the phone. Called the meeting to order at four thirty. The minutes were approved and accepted as published. We had reports from the staff. Mr. Harrow stated the airport income was two point two million dollars, and the expenses were two point eight. It was a mid-year loss of six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, of which we are still awaiting a large sum of money and several hundred thousand dollars in grant money that's funds that's due back to the city, so, or to the airport, so we will pretty much even that out. And airport operations manager, he said fuel cells were good last month, that they were looking good, but they had, went down a little bit. It looked like the sales would be going down this month. The, my guy also stated that the interplane contract for the military was finalized, which means that the military gets to use now to, they don't need to get a special authorization to use the fuel, which will be a contribution to our fuel cells. Also, my guys, my guy stated that the new fuel truck should be here in September. And Mr. Sputone, which was one of our guest acts, when the FAA database would be updated, Dave Robinson stated that it will be rescheduled, rescheduled for August sixth and will be changed on August nineteenth. As far as new business, the approval of the bid, the passenger terminal modification, Mr. Harrow stated that it was only one bid, and it was from Bloomsdale, and since there was only one bid, that they would accept those, accept that bid. It was a motion made, it was passed, and Mr. Harrow stated that we were going to have a special city hall meeting on August first, which took place, and we will address a little bit of that after this, this briefing. The approval of the air service promotion agreement, new marketing, Mr. Harrow stated that we have the new air service grant for eighty-five thousand dollars. He would like to have a discussion with the SOP in regards to the grant, and we were given twenty thousand dollars more, twenty thousand more dollars for the route study to see if there are more places we can travel to. Mr. Harrow made a motion to approve the grant, Randy seconded it, and the motion was passed. Review of the bylaws, Mr. Harrow stated that the organizational meeting is in August. At that time, we will go ahead and appoint, reappoint positions on the board. And we already talked about this before, but one, one, one member suggested we would have nine members. If we do this, we could have four from each city and one at large. Another item to change in the bylaws was the meeting date, and those things are going to be discussed at that board meeting. The airport field trip ladder for the local schools, Mr. Harrow discussed that the ladder that was drafted for the schools, this will help promote the airport, so we can get more visibility on that. As far as old business, the grant project, Mr. Harrow stated about the parallel taxi project. Mr. Harrow stated that the progress is coming along very well, and Dave Robinson said everything is working smoothly and as scheduled. The terminal area master plan, Mr. Harrow stated that the terminal area master plan has been approved by both cities, and we are currently waiting on hold on. Marketing updates, SOP marketing plan. We had the phone call from Erin, called in the meeting to provide an update, and she discussed, she discussed the report with, with those on the board, the updated report. Twenty nineteen air service promotion grant, the board and the guests discussed ideas on different, different effects and giveaways to help promote the airport. Other business, the chairman, Mayor Larson, opened the floor for comments by those in attendance. Dorsey Newcomb discussed the ticketing and bagging agreement for the Marines to help better their travel, and we're looking at trying to, to come up with an agreement to support the holiday block leave travel plan. Ms. Kerewett discussed the employment numbers, which will be added to the, the agenda each month. The employment numbers for June were five fifteen for outbound and two twenty, two seventy-seven for inbound, and, and that will be added to the agenda.
Can I ask you, Mr. Harrow, are we happy with those numbers?
Those numbers are lower than the likely, uh, be, and I think that's when you get a big carrier in, and sometimes... in, and sometimes there's a delay in, you know, the marketing and the lines, and also they didn't have an interline agreement, which are working on, which is going to happen.
And I think that's going to make all the difference in the world, where you have baggage.
They're down, but we're working steadily to try and improve those numbers.
And didn't they say in a meeting the other day that they think they're pretty close to getting that?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. This fall we'll get that.
Okay.
We already, from the previous meeting, I have already stated that as of July 31st, that Hertz rental would no longer be in the airport on installation. A motion was made, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:14. The next meeting is August 27th at 3:00 PM in St. Robert.
In St. Robert. Any questions for Sean? We do have an ordinance, and again, these are the grant ordinances that we do almost every month, it seems like. This is ordinance number 2380, and it has to do with the layout for our new master plan.
Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and our city administrator to execute on airport any agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to fund a terminal area master plan update, airport layout plan update, and that application preparation at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing the effective date. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and our city administrator to execute on airport any agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to fund a terminal area master plan update, airport layout plan update, and that application preparation at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing the effective.
Very good. I entertain a motion. Motion by Brad. Sean is seconding that. And any comments or questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Farne.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Hawley.
Yes.
Councilman Ray.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And our last meeting of the night is Councilman Farne for Economic Development.
Normally the quickest, Mayor. We met on August 6th, called order at 5:00 PM, and no citizen comments. Our meeting primarily was over bed and breakfast and a short-term run that we've been discussing. Mr. Harrow stated that he will be bringing those ordinance to review the next month's meeting, so he was making progress there. Research regarding adopted new building codes is also discussed. Quite an ordeal to update everything. Working on that. The next topic was research regarding the updating of the city stormwater management ordinance, this was the discussion this evening. Special events, Mr. Harrow reviewed upcoming events, the Buckhorn Bluegrass Festival, the very first one, is coming up August 30th. And MRPC Annual Bankrupt, which is held at Waynesville on October 24th. Having no further business, we got out of there at 5:19. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 3rd at 5:00 PM.
Bill, I bought my tickets today for the Buckhorn Bluegrass Festival. And if you like bluegrass, you gotta come to Shrine Club. It's August 30th, that weekend.
It's Liberty Day.
And if you want to see some good bluegrass, let me tell you, Arkansas, get it. Arkansas is going to perform. And then there's a lady named Opal Agatia that will knock your socks off. She is good. So that's why I'm going, to see those two.
Mayor, they have one, or did have one every year when we're outside of Dixon, that was very, very large, so I imagine there'd be a lot of people coming.
Very good.
And that's the reason we decided to do it. Dixon canceled theirs, and there was a whole lot of people that still wanted a place to go. It's actually a really good family environment type thing.
Well, my family's coming up.
Yeah.
My brother and my sister are coming up from Arkansas. Watch out, city. Okay. Also, if you would, add October 5th to your calendar. October 5th is the Frog Fest this year, and of course, that's being sponsored by the mayor, the, help me, the Runners.
R-W-B.
Do, what do they call themselves, Frog? F-R-O-G. It's an F-R-O-G group, Melissa Martinez, and they sponsor that now, so be sure and write that on your calendar. And then, Mr. Harrow, if I could ask you, again, because Dean's here too, the stormwater management ordinance, what exactly is that?
That's the ordinance that governs stormwater management in a city. I think the original specifications were based on the city of Columbia from 1991, and so we're basically looking at the specifications, see if we need to update them.
Okay.
And in some cases, many, in several cases, we asked developers to comply with higher standards, and several of the developers have. That includes Woodland Hills.
Very good.
And includes, you know, some of the developments, you know, where the movie theater is, they expanded that intention basically to hold the 100-year storm instead of the 25 or 10-year storm as specified in the ordinances. So, we're looking to see if we need to update those to maybe make them a little, maybe a little bit tougher.
Very good.
Because we're getting more and more rainwater in the city.
Very good.
And it's just due diligence to look at them, and see if they need to be updated.
I would remind the public too, that we did start the business spotlight, and if you have a business in Waynesville that you'd like to nominate, you can get that nomination form online by writing our city page, and they will be sure and give that to you. So, also, on September 11th is...
I have the band contacting you. About...
Holy disgracious. You know, nobody's gotten hold of me. You know, ever since, gosh, I believe, the last six years, the Army Band has been giving a September 11th concert. And so September 11th this year is on a Wednesday, and so please, Sean, are you kind of running that, or somebody contacted you?
Yeah, they found one.
Very good. Very good. If you wouldn't mind, because I'm going away for a little while, so if you wouldn't mind doing that, and when I get back, we'll kind of hook up and get it all going. So, you know, that is always such a great concert. I am serious. They always do something that's spectacular, and it seems like, Dean, you always come. You always have the audience. They always do something really, really fun and really, really interesting, and of course, that's a very special day in our country. So, let's see, were there any questions for Bill? And then I just wanted to mention that Draw Computer, which is our new coffee shop here in town at the old Malo's Market area, Draw Computer is open. I will tell you that they, every day that I've driven by, they've been packed. I gather they have quite a lunch menu. I had their coffee today, I loved it. So be sure and give them a chance. That is German, and it stands for Feed Your Dragon.
Where's it located?
The old Malo's Market.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. It's across from Everblooming Thing and across from the library. On Facebook, we said it's across from the funeral home, and one lady did not like that description. So, it's across from Everblooming Thing and the library. And then I spoke yesterday with the people who have bought Big Wheels downtown, Big Wheel site, and they have begun to put walls up inside that, and so we're very excited about that, and they did tell me that they plan to make an announcement before too long, an official announcement, and that hopefully, maybe we might even see them opening the walls. So those are some good things going on. Mr. Harrow, city administrator report.
Hey, Mayor, of course, I have written a report. I'm very proud of all the work we've been doing in the city this year. The rebuilding of the warehouse too is going very good, and as Mike, Mr. France said, we hope to test it tomorrow. And the pent building of the pad site on Northern Midwater Park is going good. And we also had the first round of paving our roads, we accomplished that. And school started, of course, yesterday, very busy, and GW Lane got a good workout in the center turn lane. I've heard several reports that the center turn lane of GW Lane is working very well in helping the traffic in that area. Now, it is a very high, highly traffic road, first few days of school, of course, but it seems like it's working good. Of course, we're going to keep the Miriam busy with some of these grants that you just approved tonight, and Hammer's continuing to help her. And I just want to say, you can make those finance meetings, they are a lot of fun, and you know, you can learn a lot about the city.
Mayor, I know we do have a lot of personnel updates, you know, we've got, people went on to different opportunities, but we've got new people coming in too. So we've got Lisa Cochran's going to be up front, and Officer Steve Watson, I think he moved back home, Wyoming. We got a chance to promote Corey Hoard from dispatcher to patrolman, and Taylor King moving into full dispatch position. We hired a new apprentice lineman, Trent Morgan, and he's had some, about three months of training, so he's one of the more experienced apprentice linemen that we've ever hired, and we appreciate bringing him on board. Zach Tiger resigned for another opportunity. We hired Dylan Powell in the water department. So, we made some turnover, but we continue to attract some good people. We also have Tyler Higgin. He's working on a special program. He's transitioning from the Air Force, and he's, while he's doing that, he's working for the city, basically, as an intern for a few months. So that's a program that the department intends. Mayor, I know you do want the bear guidelines, the most important one is do not feed the bears.
Do not feed the bears.
Do not feed the bears, yes.
Very good. I need a copy of that, okay? We're going to have some council comments here, and let's start down here with Bill.
I'd like to add that don't feed the bears is to hide your picnic basket, you know, maybe Yogi...
Yogi Bear bag.
School's back in session, school buses are out, people got to remember, put their cell phones down, don't talk, don't text, pay attention, don't run over any kids.
Very good. Cecil?
I want to say that apparently, the bear is catching more fish at Riverdew Springs than I am. But if it gets confused as bear, here's a problem. But I want to reiterate, kids back in school, you gotta watch out. I seen somebody pulled over when I went to work this morning. They just weren't obeying the speed limit.
Right.
So you gotta remember, that's flashing again.
Very good. Sean?
Just echo the same thing. Just be mindful of the kids walking out on the streets, watching speeds in the neighborhoods, please. We had a couple of cars racing in our neighborhood.
Wow.
And it's 20 miles an hour.
Wow.
And one car had to slam on the brakes because he didn't realize the car was on the side and it was parked. So please, be mindful of driving in neighborhoods, just respect everyone else. I mean, when you hit someone's kid and you say you're sorry, that's not going to be enough to that parent. So, woo, let's see.
Mike?
My wife and I have been spending a lot of time at the park, our city park, and we have, we're blessed with a great city park. The playground's busy all the time, and of course, my grandkids, I take them there, but how blessed we are to have such a good park in our city.
Very good. Nice.
Gary? Well, thanks to city staff, Bruce, and everyone for great job you're doing every month. A lot of smiling faces out there tonight. Thanks for having me.
Clarence?
Since they all trust mine, usual, I'll just echo what they said.
Very good. And Ed?
Actually, I do have something.
Ed has broken his leg, and he is on, not trashes, but one of those little fishy things.
I got a...
Yes.
There's the old Irish proverb, there's something like, it's a little way, one of those, and the way the world is these days, we sometimes forget there are good people out there.
Now...
In the last two and a half weeks, I have had neighbors, I have had friends, I've had family, I've had complete strangers help me out. The other day, I was going to go into a business, and a young man passed me on the way out, and he actually asked me, he turned around and ran back to the door, to open the door for this old man. There are a lot of good people out there, and we're, I got a broken leg, but I'm able to remember that there are a lot of good people in our community.
Nice.
And I'm thankful for them.
Nice. Thank you. Mike?
I would say to you, you have to really try and take care of our super seniors in the community. And we cherish you, young man. Good things coming up. Yeah, I'm only 65, and he's got me whooped. But I would tell you that our police force, I really appreciate their professionalism. I was stopped this morning because I'd done something wrong.
Uh-oh.
You know, they, very professional in what they did. I was very pleased. And I told Chief about that. I would also say that if you have the opportunity to drive around and just look what our people do throughout our, whether it's the street, the water, the sewer, the gas, those guys, not only do they take care of their departments, but you'll find that they come together as a collective group and work on these big projects that, if you tried to add up how much money they have saved us in doing stuff, you would absolutely, they would absolutely be floored. They do human's work, and I think a lot of it has to do with Mr. Harrow and Mr. McDonald in shepherding those programs for us on a daily basis. I just cannot say enough about their efforts on behalf of our community.
Very good. I want to say two things, and then Dean's waving at me. Dean, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I did. I know it's a couple of common purposes, something about the kids are out there now. Building sidewalks, the pedestrians are now, I tell you what, there was a couple of phone calls this morning, a few was coming off the sidewalk, wanted to get across the Mitchell Creek Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
You get the end of it, and they come up toward the road.
Right.
And I tell you, it scared the hell out of me.
And you know, I was going to say, the buses. You know, pay attention to the buses, and those lights come on, you better be stopping, okay? I want to just say two things, and they're both fun things. Mike and Vic Weir, Detective Sergeant Weir, and I, last Friday, went to St. Louis to receive special awards from the Employer Support Guard Reserve Group, which by the way, is a national group, it's funded by the Department of Defense. It's kind of a big deal. This is the third year that we've gotten this award. Next year, we will be up for the Department of Defense award, so that's kind of a big deal. And so I appreciate, Mike, you and your wife being there, and Vic and his wife being there. We had such a good time, it was a great weekend, and I was surprised, of course, to be recognized myself. And so that was kind of an interesting little thing. I kind of knew something was up, but we're sitting there, and all of a sudden, up on the screen pops my picture. So it definitely got my attention, I went, wow! And so that was kind of nice. And guess who I was recognized with? The Missouri Maverick Hockey Team. So me and the hockey team, okay? And then lastly, I wanted to say, another fun thing, that every year I have been mayor, I have made a bet with the Lebanon mayor on the football game. I've never won. So Joe Haynes, who's the coach at the high school, is my Arkansan friend, and so I did have a special talk with him the other day. I said, "You must give a special pep talk to the football boys, because this is my last year, and I would love to win." But the mayor of Lebanon, Jerry Carr, and I have made a bet on the football game, which is September 13th. It is here this year, and Jared and his wife will be my guests at the ballgame. So if you know any of those football players, be sure and be pumping them up, okay? Because I'd love to win. Okay? Anything else for the good of the city? This meeting is adjourned.